Please call the roll.
Hoffman.
Here.
Lard.
Here.
Swallow.
Here.
Adir.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
All right, item four is discussion and action on consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request it to be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on July 15th, 2024. Item B, approval of the minutes of the special meeting on July 25th, 2024. Item C, approval of the minutes of the special meeting on August 7th, 2024. Item D, approval of the minutes of the emergency meeting on August 12th, 2024. Item E, approval of claims in the amount of $205,952.29 and payroll expenses of $253,573.97. That's it. That's enough. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion for Mr. Bowman and Dr. Lard to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion?
Do we know what the table is going to be on that we're paired with the well field yet?
No.
Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman.
Yes.
Lard.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Adir.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Because we have a lengthy agenda for the reports, I'm going to just say that if anybody would like to share something from one of your committees here, please feel free, or if there are any questions, fire away. All right. So we'll move to, we'll go ahead and Steve, do you have a report?
Just, it's been a busy month, obviously, starting the new year, July and going to August. We've got a lot of irons in the fire. We've also had a lot of really good meetings lately with the Hatfield Parkmaster Plan. As that kind of starts to develop, I think that's coming along nicely. I am working on my Rick report to get back out. I've got a template or draft I need to get to you. Like this week, for you to take a look at and see if there's anything missing. Other than that, just we're trying, we're staying busy. Everybody's engaged and everybody's working real hard as a team.
Any questions for Mr. Ford? Thank you, sir. Item seven, remarks and inquiries by citizens. Anybody would like to make a public comment? We'll have you introduce yourself and we will give you the floor for two minutes. We are glad everybody's here this evening. Item eight, employee recognition. ICO firefighter Grant Taylor. So we've got, where is it? I can't try, can't read this.
Chief Miller's got it.
Chief Miller? Okay. Chief Miller.
I put in this recommendation, received a phone call from a local citizen about firefighter Taylor and some actions that he performed on his day off on a medical emergency. And as, I'll just kind of read what the local citizen, and he didn't want his name brought public, so I just kind of left it out. But I'm, and I'll summarize this too. On July 18th, 2024, I received a phone call about firefighter Taylor. The citizen really wanted to commend him on what he believed was his heroism, professionalism, while on duty, saved the life of his granddaughter, the two years old. Basically, they had an issue with the young child got into some medication that was made for animals. They saw it happen. They looked outside and they knew their neighbor, and Grant was outside, so they went to him for help. Grant basically sprung into action without any due cause and knew what he needed to do, called poison control, and knew that the young child needed to get to dependent care. So he basically took this child in his own vehicle, took him to the hospital where the child was later thrown out. The public citizen basically said when they got him, got the child to OU Medical Center, they said that he didn't react the way that he acted, contacted poison control, knew the proper steps, that the child could have succumbed to the medication that was taken by this child. And he basically said, you know, if Grant wasn't outside willing to act in his professionalism, how calm he was, kept everybody calm, knew the right thing to do at the time, and got their child or their granddaughter to the hospital, that child wouldn't be there. And he really wanted something done, which I agreed with him on it. So I make the recommendation that he falls under our employee recognition program for his notorious action that he did that day off duty and reacted and helped local citizens, you know, and saved a life. So I make that recommendation that he receive full compensation, one shift off, with a milk or two for him and his wife, and two movie tickets to take her out for him really going above and beyond the call of duty on that day and taking care of that child.
So, Grant?
Come on up here.
Get it in your cheek.
Oh, I didn't want to get it in my.
Right through your own face. One, two, three. Wait for her. Sorry.
Smile a little. He's doing this.
I'll do it my best. I don't know how to. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your consideration.
We are very blessed to have a whole crew of wonderful first responders and thank you, Grant, for, you know, setting a good example as always and doing this, and we're very honored to be able to present you with that today.
Thank you. I appreciate it very much.
All right. You got ready for this? Okay, item number nine is the fiscal year 2023 City of Alba audit presentation from HSPG. We're going to have Andy or?
Yeah.
Okay. Andy Cromer is our auditor and we're getting him on, pulled up here to give the presentation. Andy, can you hear us?
I can. Thank you.
Wonderful. I'm going to turn the floor over to you to give the presentation of the audit.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Andy Cromer. I'm a CPA and we audited the city. I believe this was our second year of doing the city's audits, so this is for the year ended June 30th of '23. So keep in mind that this is, you know, a year ago's audit. And so we'll need to get started by '24, sure, I guess, at some point, but this is the year before last, people. So just a couple of big picture things, and I'll try to keep this short, but certainly if you all have questions, let me know and I'll stop and try to address them. Excuse me. But just a couple of things, our audit opinion is in here and it's, we call it an unmodified opinion. So it's a clean opinion, it hasn't been modified for anything, you know, there's no, everything's okay except for this or except for that. So that's what the state's going to want to see, is what anybody lending you money is going to want to see. The other thing, big picture thing, is that your financial statements are presented on a cash basis, which simply means we record revenue when you get cash and we record an expense when you spend cash. And that's opposed to recording revenue when you earn it and recording an expense when you incur it. So an example could be you sell, you provide utilities to your customers for the month of June, they pay you in July. Well, technically, you earn that revenue in June, but you don't record it until you receive the cash in July. And so there's multiple cases, examples where there's differences, but the city has determined that, hey, the cash basis is sufficient for our needs and it's much cheaper to prepare, it's much cheaper to audit, and honestly, most cities your size are not doing it that way. So, but just wanted to make you aware of that. Another thing, the Alba Hospital is not included in this report, so that's not necessarily an issue, it's not an issue at all, but just note that it is not in here. As far as getting into more, some of the nuts and bolts of this, you'll notice, I forget what page my book is on, but you all, it's on page 21, I believe. On page 21, if you want to follow along, if not, that's fine, but at the actual financial report, the general fund has a negative unassigned or a negative fund balance. It's, you know, there's a restricted component, a committed component. Those mean you all either externally or internally have restricted dollars for other purposes. This unassigned, it's $486,000, it's negative. That's basically your unrestricted money. And so we typically, I think really as a rule of thumb, would like to see that amount be anywhere, say, from one to three months of revenue. And in your case, it's about $486,000, it just needs to be on the other side of zero. So I think that's been an issue in the past and the city's continuing to work towards that, but just know that's where you were at June 30th of '23, and the general fund, the other major operating fund is the Utility Authority, and it seems to be doing okay. It's got, it's got about a little over $300,000 of unrestricted money, which again, it's a little bit less than one month's worth of revenue, but it's close. And we actually saw you all implemented a rate increase during 2023, and we can see that flowing through. So really, those are the two big things I typically will look at on any city when I'm getting ready to present a report, it's just how are the remaining funds doing? Also know that you all received, and I already forgot, but I think it might have been close to about $900,000 of ARPA funding. And so that was, you actually got it in two chunks, but you know, that's essentially a one-time deal. And so you all said, hey, let's apply those, that award, that rate money to costs we've already incurred. And so really, in the end, that helped you out as well. So you didn't spend additional money, you didn't say, hey, we got $900,000 of ARPA money, what can we buy with it? You basically just said, hey, we're going to apply it to costs we've already incurred in the prior year, just off rate to city. So we'll get into that as far as what that means here in this next piece of the discussion. But really, that's all I had to say on the actual financial statement. Steven, are you here or any of the city council have any thoughts or questions before we move on from this?
Did you say most cities do cash basis like we do or?
Of our size, yes. So I know we've made adjustments and transfers before to get to the balance where it needs to be. What was this, I mean, what caused that to happen, I guess?
Andy, did you make, have to make any adjustments? If I recall, we, I didn't think we had negative fund balances.
No, I don't believe we did, Steven. Now that Crawford's can get in there and maybe move things around before we show up. And so we don't necessarily get into that, but no, I don't believe we would have changed anything regarding that.
Yeah, Andy, that was Barrett Parker.
I'm sorry, what?
That was Barrett Parker. That's the same question.
Okay. Yeah, so I felt the mention that there's, and I meant to, there's another CPA firm involved, Crawford and Associates, that help you all and that help can vary from month to month and year to year. But one thing they do is at the end of the year, they will help get you all ready for audit. They have prepared schedules, they know what we need, they actually write this report that we're going over and then give it to us and we review it, make any changes, give it back. And then if you all just need some form of help throughout the year, then they're available to do that. But they are a completely different firm from us, but you may have seen their bills come through to be approved, or you may have heard their name, or maybe even have them come up for a meeting. But since they are a separate firm, different ownership, different group, completely independent of us. So yeah, whether or not they did something or not, I'm not sure. So I don't know if did that address the question as well as I can, or is there something else?
I did have another question and more for Steve probably on this. Is it normal for the audit to be completed a year after the?
I, this is my first one.
Okay.
I think his goes. That's, that's about the right time for a minute, Andy?
I heard that, I heard the part is it's normal for question, for an audit to be completed this late.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure what was said after that, but no, it's not.
It's, okay. What, what was the cause of that?
You know, it seems like we got started maybe in February. I don't recall, it was after the first, it was after, you know, January when, when we were able even to get started, when things were ready to be audited. And then it seemed to rock along okay. And then the second part of this speech is you all, because of the ARPA money, had to have a separate compliance on it. And so that's required when you get enough federal money involved, and I'll get into that. But once we got into that, that seemed to kind of bog things down as well. And then the turnover in staff, I think, played probably a part of that. And I don't know, Mayor or Steven, if you all have anything else to add to that?
I, I do think it had to do with the turnover in staff, probably as much as anything as far as the delay. I can tell you that Crawford and Associates are here right now preparing the pre-audit work for the year we just completed. They're, they're on site today, tomorrow and Wednesday, doing those preparations. So I don't anticipate that we'll be this far out for the next fiscal year at all. And we, yeah, we don't have to have a special audit, either.
Okay. Okay. I don't want to stop anyone from asking more questions, but I do just want to make sure, are there any more, because I do want to talk about the rest of the audit. Is there anything else before we move on?
Please proceed.
Okay. So Steven, we just mentioned a special audit, and we call it a single audit, as like one audit. But it's required when, I mean, if a government expands over $750,000 of federal money. And so I don't think typically Alba falls into this category, but because of all of the ARPA money, which is, you know, related, if you remember, that's related to all the COVID money that the federal government was passing out, because of that, you all actually met that threshold in '23. And so it doesn't mean you did anything wrong, it doesn't mean you did anything right, it just means you spent over $750,000 of ARPA money. And so that means we then have to go in and do compliance testing, in this case, go to an ARPA. And so what I guess what made it a bit more challenging as well is the council said, hey, we want to apply this ARPA money to costs we spent back in 2022, which is fine, you can do that, but so then we got to go back into 2022 and pull invoices of payroll records to support that, yes, you actually spent this money and it was allowable to be spent on ARPA. And so that added a layer of complexity, just finding those records and trying to figure out what happened and, you know, people remembering things of that nature. So anyway, that was done. And as a result of that, one of the requirements is we have to issue a separate report that says, hey, we bid this actual work on compliance over the ARPA award. And if we found anything, we'd have to say it in this separate report. And we have two comments, but neither one of them related to ARPA, but I'll go over those in a second. But so the results of ARPA came back fine. It did kind of lead into, I guess, an ancillary comment that we'll go over here just in a second. But the actual testing of the ARPA and the compliance was fine, there was no issues, no comments there. So there are two comments though that we do have. The first one is at June 30th of '23, and we just test this one day a year. Now, we, we do go out in time and see how it check out later on, but anyway, at June 30th of '23, you all were under collateralized at the bank. So that simply means state law says if you all have money in the bank, you have to, it either has to be insured by FDIC, or the bank has to provide additional collateral to cover that remaining cash at the bank. So in other words, if the bank goes out of business, you all aren't standing in line trying to collect pennies on the dollar. You all will get all of your money back should the bank go under. And so at June 30th, you're a couple hundred, maybe $250,000 or so under collateralized. And so we've actually found that it's, a lot of cities are ending up in this category, and it seems to be because of this ARPA money, cities seem to have more money than they traditionally do, and all of a sudden, they're no longer sufficiently collateralized. So I think, we've talked about this with the city at length and with the Crawfords, we're all on the call, and, and so I think there's processes in place to address it, you know, right on in time, but that's pretty word at June 30th of '23. So it's not, it's not the end all be all of comments. In fact, the Lender's communities have found themselves in that, like I said. So it's important, but you're not going to, you're not going to get in trouble, the state's not going to come shut you down. The other comment is, and this came about through the ARPA testing, but essentially with payroll, when we just look at controls over payroll, there's two employees that basically can do everything. And so for, that means they can, they can record, they can approve, they can sign, initiate, you know, any part of that payroll transaction, they have the ability to do. And we don't want people with the ability to do everything because you have segregation of duties issues. So we want person A to be able to do some things, person B to be able to do some things, and then it all has to come together, and there's an actual cross-check that can be built into that process. And so we didn't see anything that would, that would make us think, hey, something is happening that shouldn't be happening, and simply two employees have the ability to do something that we probably wouldn't want them to do and not get caught. And so again, that's one of the things where we talked with Steven and the Crawfords, and just, you all are honestly probably in a better spot to figure out how do we fix this than us, because you all have to live with the results and the answer, but just know that, you know, that's an issue that needs to be looked at. So those were our two comments, and that's really all we had. So really, it's a good report. I know it's late, but beyond that, it's a good report. Those two comments need to be followed up on and just make sure, hey, we got a handle on this going forward. And honestly, with the, with any kind of internal control and segregation of duties, one thing to keep in mind is when you have turnover, and everybody does, and it could be you just get a new person, or maybe that position is vacant for a number of days, weeks, months, however long it may be, that can change your internal control. And so you may have it set up to where we have good separation of duties, and then we have a change in people, and we no longer do. And so it's important to keep that current with your actual stated employees. And that may have been honestly what happened here, I don't recall, but that can certainly lead to it. So I think that's my report in a nutshell. Anybody have anything they'd like to speak to before I end the report?
I would, just let everybody know, as far as the internal controls are concerned, with the hiring of the finance director position, we were able to segregate more responsibilities to, to better meet those internal controls. And on the collateralization, we're fully collateralized right now. And we, I think, Andy, I think you just picked, you know, got a good moment in time, because that's something that we do focus on with the Finance Committee and the Treasurer, making sure that when we do have CDs or, or funds in the banks, that they are collateralized before we even do anything with them.
Okay. Yeah, we specialize in picking the exceptions. That's part of our, that's part of our training. All right, anything else?
What do you need from the city for us to not have this a year later? What do we need to do on our part to make sure that we get this more timely?
Well, really, we don't do anything until we hear from the Crawfords, and by meaning that, I mean, they, they say, hey, maybe here's your stuff. And then that's when we know to work on while the clocking can get started. Now, it is nice to know several months in advance if, if they can, hey, this is when it looks like we're going to have it so we can be planning our schedule, because once it, once things get off track a bit, everybody, it just seems like in the, in the CPA slash accounting industry is just maxed out. And once you get off track, well, then you're trying to fit, you know, you're trying to fit you back into our holes in our schedule, and it just gets really tough. So once, you know, once it gets off track, it's just really tough to get it back on track. But certainly just, hey, this is, this is when we're planning to have it, we'll get you scheduled, and then, you know, keep to that schedule. But yeah, really, until we get the stuff from the Crawfords, we can't do anything anyway.
Man, like, like I said, Crawfords are here this week, already started on it.
Okay, very good. Yeah, so that, and then just not, not spending a lot of federal money. We'll speed you along. So I wouldn't suspect you would have that again in '24 unless you just got a completely different, you know, large federally award, but ARPA was a one-time thing, so it's, it's over with.
Is that cumulative, Andy, or is that?
Oh, it's every year, you have that test, every year, if you stump over $750,000 of federal money in any year, then this is when this kicks in.
So does that go across funds, like airport funds?
Yeah, it's any federal award in any part of the city. You add them all together. So yeah, the general fund has a few, if the Utility Authority has some, yeah, they're all different grants, you just add them all together and you see if they collectively out of over $750,000. So larger cities will typically, every year, they just know we're going to have this. I mean, larger, say Stillwater would have this every year. Smaller cities, it's just hit and miss.
Council, any questions?
What do we do to become collateralized?
We just make sure the bank has securities on it and, and I, when Brett, Brett, is Brett your partner, Andy?
Yes. Yes.
Brett brought that to my attention and I, it was really one of those things where I was like, there's no way, because we, we were really focused on that, because we, you know, aware of, you know, how much, you know, how many dollars we have in the banks and, and, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, nothing that's going on at the bank is going to cause us to have problems as a city. And so we, I, I can't, I can't prove, I can't prove that I'm right and Andy's wrong, and so therefore it's a binding. But no, I mean, they, they collateralize with bonds and cash and everything else, and so I, I don't know how.
Yes.
I think it was a timing issue, if I'm being honest, but.
Well, state law says that, that these funds have to be collateralized. Now, it's up to the city to make sure the bank is. Now, it's up to the city to make sure the bank is doing it. It's not up to the bank just to know. The city has to monitor the bank to make sure it's done. But all the bank will do is they are, they already own, you know, it's gotta be a safe investment that, that the bank can use. So it's gotta be a treasury bill and a treasury note in that nature. And the bank already has those. And it's typically not a big deal for the bank to do this. They just need to know, hey, you don't have enough for us. And then they'll fix it. And in my experience, it hurts, it's not a big production for the bank to do it. It's just someone may need to occasionally tell them, which means someone needs to be watching it. Uh, but you can get, the bank can, will give you a statement at any point in time that says, here's how much we have set aside or how much we have for your collateralization. So it's not anything subject to interpretation. It's almost just like getting a bank statement. You know, it's a similar type of report. And it'll say, we've got these securities, we've got these treasury bills, and here's what they add up to. And if we go out of business, then these investments become your city or enough to cover your cash. So yeah, it's really not a big process or hard to do. So someone needs to make sure it gets reviewed.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Andy, and we'll look forward to getting everything ready for you for the 2024 audit.
Okay. Well, we appreciate it. We enjoyed working with you all, so thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Thank you.
Okay, bye.
We don't have anyone to approve it?
No. This is present.
Check, but I think we need to approve, we need to accept the audit. Get that on the next agenda then. Okay, so, I mean, historically, we've always accepted the audit as a council and so we'll need to get that on the next agenda. Um, item 10 is discussion in action to approve City of Alba Resolution 2024-017, a resolution of the City of Alba, Oklahoma authorizing the city business manager or mayor to temporarily suspend certain resolutions, ordinances, and code provisions of the City of Alba, Oklahoma for the purpose of enhancing and assisting in the production and making of motion pictures, television segments, and television shows within the city limits of Alba, Oklahoma. So there's a quite a big push in the state for film production. And, um, in the film industry, you know, in the communities that they've done, you know, production work, it's really had a significant economic, positive economic impact on those communities. But sometimes it requires some, uh, I guess what this says is, you know, provisions that, that we temporarily suspend some of our ordinances for the, for that purpose. Uh, these wouldn't be anything that would be safety risks or anything like that. It might be that we, um, you know, working with it, whether in production schedule, we might close a street down without, you know, having gone through what our normal channels would have been, you know, so that they can, you know, film during good weather. That's, you know, what the case may be or things like that. But we wouldn't be looking to, to do anything that would put the public at risk. But we are trying to set it to where, um, council action wouldn't be required in all those instances. Or, or this council action would allow the manager or the mayor to make those decisions. You know, clearly, we would consult with any of our, um, public safety staff and whatnot before, you know, any of that would happen. Utilities, if they're, you know, potentially impacted and that sort of thing. But, um, it's a part of an effort that a lot of cities are doing. And, and we would be doing this in conjunction with the other communities in Woods County to become a film-friendly county. There is a permit process that if they're going to, um, you know, have a production in our community, that they get a permit with fees associated with it. And, um, and then, then we have an idea. More likely, if there's anything that would be, um, applicable to this ordinance as far as suspending our, our regular ordinances, we would know about it well in advance and be able to, and we would report anything that, that was related to that at a city council meeting. What questions do we have from the council?
I think you explained it, but is this forward-looking or have there been inquiries?
We've had inquiries about film productions in our community. And, uh, and we've had some short films already produced in our community. And so this is, um, maybe a little bit forward-thinking, but we, you know, clearly had other interest in making up to this point.
On the permit, I noticed type of filming, personal use and student. So what determines whether someone needs a permit or not whenever they're going to be filming something?
It's gonna be like shutting down any roads or anything like that.
Okay.
So any, any time we have to do anything outside of normal.
If it's gonna alter our normal operations.
Okay.
Or anybody else's.
Okay, so.
Matt, Kelly, and Steve wanna be in Twisters 3.
So is there a decision process for who can do it? Or can anybody just say, I want a form and I'm gonna do a film? I mean, is there a view for?
Yeah, it's gotta come to me, but it's.
So they've got to fill out the form and you can either say yay or?
Yeah.
What's the process right now? We just wouldn't allow a period or?
Oh, there's no process.
There's no process, period.
If we're gonna start, if we're gonna start deviating from code to ordinance, we'd have to come back to city council to approve it.
I would make a motion to approve City of Alba Resolution 2024-017, a resolution of the City of Alba, Oklahoma authorizing the city business manager or mayor to temporarily suspend certain resolutions, ordinances, and code provisions of the City of Alba, Oklahoma for the purpose of enhancing and assisting in the production and the making of motion pictures, television segments, and television shows within the city limits of Alba, Oklahoma.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Parsons and a second from Dr. Lar to approve City of Alba Resolution 2024-017, as stated, 9 of 10 in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Parsons?
Yes.
Lar?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
All right, that'll be great. Jeremy Zeller will be happy to hear that. He's meeting with the film friendly, friendly folks tomorrow, I believe. Uh, item 11 is discussion in action to approve City of Alba Resolution 2024-018, resolution of the City of Alba, Oklahoma casting a vote for trustee of the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund, OKMRF, to fill the expiring term of at-large trustees, trustee representing the entire membership. So we've got seven nominations. I think we only got two BIOS, though, if I'm correct. For the position. Kami Brookshire, we got the bio on, and Robert Johnston, we've got a bio on. You know, I know some of the names, but Robert Johnston is probably the one that I know. And he is, uh, he's been in a few different cities, but, um, I think right now he's in. Clinton, okay. That's close. But, uh, I don't have enough, uh, knowledge otherwise to make recommendations, but, but if I were to make one, I'd recommend Robert. And we're choosing one?
Yes, one.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve Alba Resolution 2024-018, a resolution of the City of Alba casting a vote for Robert Johnston, trustee of the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund, to fill the expiring term at-large trustees representing the entire membership.
I'll second that. Have a motion by Mr. Bowman and a second by Mr. Adair to approve Resolution 2024-018, casting a vote for Robert Johnston for trustee of the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund, filling the expiring term of at-large trustee representing the entire membership. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Lar?
Yes.
All right, the next item is discussion in action to enter into agreement with County of Woods, uh, County of Woods to allow Woods County to build a senior citizen center, community center, commencing at the southwest corner of Block 20, original town, city of Alba. So this has been discussed in council before. This is the property at the old armory. And it would be the southeast corner of the property where they would like to build. The county commissioners reviewed the memorandum of understanding this morning and it meets their, they didn't vote on it. They're waiting to see if we approved it. But it meets their needs. We've been back and forth with it internally. Drew's had it, back and forth with the, um, district attorney. And, um, and so we're, we feel like the language is such that the city is protected from, from any, um, you know, unforeseen expenses and that sort of thing. We do have in there that it would be a, a long-term lease at a dollar a year with the county. We would, once constructed, we would have utility revenue from the facility. And in any way, the, the, other than that, our obligation would be limited to just the provision of utilities. And then if, if anything were to, um, happen with the operation, the property and all the structures that had been constructed would be the City of Alba's to do with as we wish.
But as, with them leasing the ground, we're not responsible for any sort of maintenance or anything to the building?
No, and then, and we, um, we don't have any of those obligations under this memorandum of understanding.
And it says slash community center. So this building's gonna be more than just, just used for the senior center. It can be used for other community uses?
They would probably be able to do that when they're not using it for senior centers. Yeah. And I wouldn't wanna restrict them from being able to do that. I mean, if we can use it for.
Oh, that's a great, it's a great additional building, have a meeting on, so I'm excited.
I entertain a motion. Everybody shy tonight.
I'll make a motion to enter an agreement with Woods County to allow Woods County to build a senior citizen senator, center slash community center commencing at the southeast corner of Block 20, original town, city of Alba, Oklahoma.
I'll second. Have a motion from Mr. Bowman and a second from Mr. Parsons to enter an agreement with Woods County to allow them to build a senior center slash community center at the southeast corner of Block 20 in the original town, city of Alba, Oklahoma. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Lar?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Item 13 is discussion in action on recommendation to submit a FAA grant application for Grant AIP 3-40-0003-020-Z-2024 for a FAA grant in the amount of $4,200, or excuse me, $4,323,118 with a required city match of $216,156 and a state ODAA match of $216,156 to fund rehabilitate taxiway B and install taxiway lights and authorize the city business manager and/or mayor to sign all necessary documents, accept the grant from the FAA, and carry out the project. The matching funds would be from existing funds with the airport. Wouldn't have any impact on the general fund. And that would cause a single audit. But for $4 million, it's, it's a good chunk, so. That is a, for us, it's a half of a 5% match. Or, excuse me, our half is 5% of 10% match. And, uh, that's for taxiway rehabilitation and taxiway lights. Entertain a motion.
I'll motion we approve item 13 as listed in the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Brooks and a second from Mr. Hoffman to approve the submission of the FAA grant application, as stated, item 13 of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, is it Dr. Lar?
Is that Dr. Lar?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I said, look. Swallow, man, give it to her.
He might not have been willing. Well, I'd have a motion from Mr. Brooks and a second by Dr. Lar to approve item 13. Is there any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Adair. Keep going on. Please call the vote.
Brooks?
Yes.
Lar?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Item 14 is discussion in action to approve entering into an agreement with Luckinville Mechanical to manufacture the curb and gutter on the south side of the 800 block of both sides. South side of the 800 block. And both sides of the 700 block of Locust Street at a total cost of $50,000 and authorize the city business manager and/or mayor to sign all necessary documents. Steve, why don't you take this one?
So we, uh, trying to self-perform this and the reality is we've only got 80 feet of forms available to us in the city. And talking with the Pub Works Director and our Street Department Director, our supervisor, it's gonna take us roughly two more months to get all this done if we keep doing it ourselves. The 700 block is almost twice as long as the 800 block is. And it took us over two weeks to do one side of the 800 block. So the reality is if we keep self-performing this, we might get the curb and gutter poured, but we're not gonna be able to paint it this year, not till it warms up again. So I know Locust's been the thorn in everybody's side. And these guys here at Luckinville will come in on a Saturday. Do we talk next Saturday even? So if we improve this, they'll be here next Saturday and warm up all the, the south side of 800 and both sides of 700. They'll come back following Saturday with all their own equipment, all their own labor, like 13 guys, and their own concrete trucks, and they'll pour it all in one day. So roughly in, in two weeks, we'll have all the curb and gutter in. And we'll stub enough heat that we can start putting down asphalt before we lose the heat. That's, that's the reality of it, is we're up against time and mother nature.
We are, you know, coming up on, if not just past two years. It was right about the time school started two years ago when we, um, tore that out, found the water line issue underneath that street. And so, um, this, uh, I'd prefer to self-perform it and save the money, but, um, we do have the money in the street and alley fund. And, um, but I, I don't wanna see this project get pushed to the next season. And, but I, I don't want to see this project get pushed to the next season. My recommendation would be to approve this. Are we doing something in the alley also? Somebody was complaining they weren't going to be able to get into their property.
Yeah, so we've put signs on their doors, because what's going to happen is, as soon as this gets approved, starting on Monday, our crew, part of this whole agreement with these guys, is we're tearing out all the curb and gutter. When we do that, we dig a pretty significant trench between the road and their driveway. So if they don't have alley access, we're going to, I talked to Mr. Lewis earlier, we'll figure out a way to work with them where they can still have alley access, even when they put the forms up. But the day we pour on that following Saturday, they're going to have to stay on their driveway for at least a day. And we'll go around and make sure that's clear to the residents. We've put door hangers on everybody's door already, just so they can know that this is kind of, whether we did it ourselves or Luckinville did it. Yeah, the district's reality is, we've got to dig that stuff out, it's about that deep.
I think that was some of the confusion. I got feedback on that people just saw the sign on the door and thought, I can't use my driveway for two weeks.
Well, like I said, we, we can figure something out, but it's, it's going to cause that nasty work for overtime on that Saturday when they're ready to pour, for us to go in and dig that back out. Just because it has to be ready for them to come in and pour. But, you know, it may be, if we can work it, we'll make it a day of inconvenience. But they also have to make sure that it cure before they start driving on it, we're going to run the work.
Any opportunity to get some steel plate?
I think we, I think there's a possibility to get that. Check with the district, see if we can get, get something going on with that. We do have a little bit of steel plate around the shop. As far as that goes though, I mean, there, there will be, I mean, other ways of parking on that. Across the field of residence, they won't, either, or north-south road right there on 800 block, they weren't concerned about parking over there either, since we won't have that, that side and walking around and going to their, their residences everywhere.
Do you have any idea if we can still play it out there too? Actually, we got, we got ways to work around it, we're just trying to. This is the quickest and fastest method to get this done and get Locust Street closed out finally.
We're definitely running out of hot weather.
Except yesterday.
Well, I'd make a motion to enter into an agreement with Luckinville Mechanical to manufacture the curb and gutter on the south side of the 800 block and both sides of the 700 block of Locust Street at a total cost of $50,000 and authorize the city business manager and/or mayor to sign all necessary documents. Second from Hoffman.
I have a motion from Mr. Parsons and a second from Mr. Hoffman. Is that okay with you, Dr. Larr? Perfect, all right. To approve entering in an agreement with Luckinville Mechanical for $50,000 to do the curbs on Locust Street as stated in item 14 in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Parsons?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Lark?
Yes.
I will say, I mean, I'm glad we're approving this, but the other quote we had on that curb was like 90 grand, so that's much better. Thank you.
There was a lot of give and take there.
Next item is item 15, discussion in action to approve committee recommendation regarding retail economic development consultation services, including selecting a firm, authorizing further negotiations, and/or approving service contracts and agreement, and authorize the mayor and/or city business manager to sign all necessary documents. So we, we had a quick, put-together committee meeting of Mr. Parsons, Mr. Adair, Dr. Larr, and Mrs. Swallow, along with Steve and Sadie and myself this afternoon, where we had all three of the firms that made presentations to council, come in and answer some final questions and, you know, provide us enough information. Hopefully, the hope was to, to be able to, to come here this evening and give a recommendation to the full council. The recommendation coming out of the committee is, if any of you guys want to chime in, feel free. But the recommendation coming out of committee is that we proceed with negotiating with City Economics to enter into an agreement with them for development, retail development and consultation services. But I think one of the things that, if it hasn't been stated enough, that, you know, even as we, you know, hear from our auditor about kind of our negative general fund position at the end of '23, revenue is important to our general fund, and we, we have to figure out ways to start generating that in our community, and whether that be with recruiting new retail stores to our community, or whether that be developing, you know, our existing talent and resources into more opportunities. We, we've got to be strategic about this, and we've got to get a plan together. And we feel that City Economics has a strong background in municipalities. They have a pretty stellar team of folks that are on their board or on their staff. And we would be working to negotiate the, the final terms of a year agreement and then see how it goes, go from there. But anybody want to add to that, guys, or? And Gil. But that, if, if this gets approved this evening, Steve and I will get to negotiating some of the points of the contract with them. And then before anything is finalized, the contract will come back before council. I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor and city business manager to continue negotiations with City Economics in an attempt to reach a contract that can then be reviewed by the council.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Adair and a second by Dr. Larr to enter into negotiations with City Economics for retail economic development consultation services and bring a contract back for council approval. Close enough? Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Adair?
Yes.
Lark?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Item 16 is new business. We do not have anything that would meet the requirements for new business. 17, remarks and inquiries by council members. Moving on, we will adjourn the city council meeting. Well, let's go, let's go AUA.
AUA.
Please call the roll.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Lark?
Sorry.
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Adair?
Here.
Brooks?
Yep.
Parsons?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Item 3 is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature and normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 15th, 2024. Item B, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of July 25th, 2024. Item C, approval of claims in the amount of $463,193.29 and payroll expenses of $61,932.51.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
I have a motion from Dr. Larr and a second from Mr. Hoffman to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Lark?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Item 5 is discussion in action to enter into an agreement with Waste Connections to perform sanitation services for the City of ALBA as outlined in their proposal and authorize the city business manager and/or mayor to sign all necessary documents. We have an option to proceed with a seven-year or a 10-year. I think I might have misspoke with some of you, and I thought we had an option for a five-year, but it is seven-year and 10-year in these agreements. There's about a $30,000 per month difference?
It's a year, I thought it was a year.
It's a, okay, that's what I thought.
No, it's a year.
$29,400 a month difference between 10-year and, or per year difference between 10-year and a seven-year agreement. At either rate, we will, with this agreement, we'll forego our expenses for the period of time once Waste Connections is able to get started to operate our own department. They would operate the department for the fees that are outlined. And we would also, within that agreement, the landfill fees are included. So whereas right now, it's a separate item from our, or it's included in our operations, it'll be included in the agreement with Waste Connections. They are the only firm at the table. We did review or did look into two other firms, and I think one of them, one of the others gave presentation to council. The other one opted not to do that. But the budget has been established to, to terminate self-performance at January 1st. So we're still hoping we can meet that timeframe for, you know, the budget implications that we would have. And, yeah, I guess whatever questions we have now would be the time to discuss them. Yeah, and we do have representatives here. Answer questions, Steve, or I can't.
I know some of this has already been discussed, but I did have somebody ask me about our current stock of roll-offs and things that we own. Is that one state with us, or are we going to declare those surplus?
We have the, yeah, we have the option to declare all of that surplus and liquidate it. We also have discussed keeping roll-offs and a roll-off truck at the transfer site that, that we would make available. And Steve's been working with the staff to see about locating a scale to maybe help us operate that more efficiently and not at loss. And so we're, that's not been set in stone, that has been discussed, but any and all of those options are on the table for us.
Is there a five-year rate sheet available?
No, we've got it set on a 10.
You don't do, none of your units are on five?
Not with this scale of the containers that would be purchased, and the trucks would be purchased.
That's my only deal, is seven years is a, is a long time, I think, maybe.
And it is with a little bit of trepidation that we enter into this. I mean, I, I think it's a big change. It's a, it's a change that, you know, we'd like to be able to operate it on our own at the, with financial, you know, situation that was favorable to us. We, we're just not able. We do have it in our budget to employ any of the current staff in other positions, and we do that. So there won't be anybody without a job unless they don't want to work for us anymore. And, and so we did approve that in the budget to hire those positions. And, but otherwise, if we don't approve this, we, we will have a significant amount of budget amendments to, to try to tackle to be able to make our budget balanced by the end of the year.
Dr. Larr works for Northwestern, and they own a considerable amount of dumpsters. Do we know, are those going to, are those, are, do you have plans for, for the college yet? Are we keeping our dumpsters as they are, and you guys are going to?
Well, it'll be all our dumpsters.
So it'll be all the stuff that we get from you guys?
Yes, everything as far as poly carts, as far as dumpsters, will be all ours. That'll, that'll be set for the city. All of you guys will be whatever you guys decide to do with them. But everything will be, it'll be a front-load service instead of a rear-load service like you guys have now. Some of the dumpsters could be up-sized, depending on where they're at, to accommodate where some areas where you guys might have two or four dumpsters, we could be setting a, a single dumpster or two, a little bit larger dumpsters to still accommodate with everything.
And there's no anticipated costs to the university or any other business on replacement of those?
That's all, all within you guys' city already.
People who say, I understand the residential is going to go to one-time-a-week trash, but businesses that require twice-a-week trash? I know, and it may not be due to volume, like restaurant owners, where they are, they, their trash, they don't want it to be there for a full week. Do you offer twice-a-week options for that?
Yes, we, we've already done that on our, on that. It's either going to be a one-time-a-week, two-times-a-week, or three-times-a-week. Yeah, three-times-a-week, we have that option.
On your, on the dumpsters?
On the dumpsters, the residential, poly carts are one-time-a-week.
Now, in the, will somebody, was commercial or residential, be able to get the same service that they're getting now for the similar cost? Are residents going to see any substantial increase?
Our customers shouldn't see any, any increase over what our current ordinances permit.
But, okay, so just the CPI, there's, the price should stay the same as I'd see that.
But now, just, just to make sure we're clear. So even if, even if residents are moving to a one-time-a-week trash pickup, they're going to be offered two poly carts, correct? So they're not going to see a decrease in volume?
Yes.
It's, if we start talking about volume, they're going to be able to throw away the same volume weekly they currently throw away, so actually picked up one time a week.
So is it going to be curbside or out?
Yeah, curbside. Curbside.
Matt, were you on council when we presented?
I think I was here for one, I don't believe it was you. I don't believe it was your company.
I, well, he wasn't.
We were here. I didn't know if, do we need to table it and have a conversation? I mean, there were some people that didn't even see their presentation. I mean, unless you guys feel good about it, I just didn't know if everyone might want to table it. Probably don't have to, I guess, whatever.
My biggest question is, if we don't do this, you talked about several budget amendments. Is that possible? I mean, is that?
I don't, I don't have an answer where the dollars come from if we don't do this. I mean, because we, we, we looked at that six ways from Sunday, you know, just putting the budget together. And I don't know where it would come from, otherwise.
So it would be extremely difficult to have?
And, you know, I, I don't know that, our guys worked their tails off, and, and I, I don't know that we're in a position to give them all the tools they need to, to really do a great job. I mean, they, they worked their tails off, but, because if we, you know, not only, you know, not only would we need to figure out how we just have an operating budget for that department, we'd have to figure out how we continue to fund, you know, capital outlay. How much was our last garbage truck we got? 300,000?
Yeah, I think that's what Ronnie told me, it's like, it's north of 300,000.
We need two more, right now. So if we're not going to do this, we need to talk about getting those guys a truck they don't use.
Had several conversations with the city's finance director too. At least one good conversation, I feel pretty.
No, I was just throwing it out.
No, I do appreciate that because I was here for the Waste Connections proposal.
No, I don't have a problem with the company doing it. I just want to see, I just prefer to see that organs repealed and people be able to contract individually, just bypass the city and other people go into the business also. I know that's not going to happen if you invest this much.
And now, this, nothing we're signing with them would make it where somebody who currently owns a private trash hauling business that is like commercial promodelling, not like regular trash, but someone needs a roll off. Or are those businesses still going to be able to operate within the city of Alvis?
I don't think there's any agreement, anything in the agreement that would prohibit the roll off providers.
I mean, obviously, we prefer the us, but no, as far as you got, yeah, as far as you guys, that's you guys' ordinance. If you want to change that to where it's exclusively the us, that's fine. If you want to stay with the way you guys are, that anybody can come into town. You guys have changed that, it's been a few years ago, to where other people can come into town or other companies can come into town as far as roll off.
But it doesn't change anything about organs as far as if you have water service, you have to.
Yes, yeah.
Trash service.
Yep.
But that doesn't change anything either.
I like the idea of privatizing trash. I think it's financially responsible, but I do not feel comfortable with seven years. That's just my thing. I feel like it's just too long, the agreement with them. And I know they have a substantial investment, but I just, five, I would probably be able to handle, but I just think that's seven to 10, for sure not 10. That's, that's kind of how I feel about it.
This is our option, guys.
I'll make a motion to enter in an agreement with Waste Connections to perform sanitation services for the city of Alvis outlined in their proposal and authorize the city business manager and or mayor to sign all necessary documents. Did you have a length of term, Greg, that you wanted to make a motion on there?
Seven to 10-year contract.
Seven to 10 years, that's stated in the agenda.
Either one, I think it's seven or 10.
You got seven or.
Oh, seven years. I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
I have a motion from Mr. Bowman and a second by Mr. Adair to enter into an agreement with Waste Connections to perform sanitation services for the city as outlined in their proposal and authorize the city business manager and mayor to sign all necessary documents for a seven-year agreement. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Parsons?
No.
Lahr?
No.
Brooks?
No.
Well, it's four votes to three. Motion carries. We'll get everything all signed up and ready to go and start working on a transition.
Yeah, we'll get the contract going too.
Thank you guys for being here.
Thank you guys all.
Appreciate it. We do not have anything that qualifies as new business and therefore we will adjourn. And I'll call the order of the, which the regular economic development authority. Please call the roll.
Hoffman?
Here.
Lahr?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Adair?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Item 3 is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings, excuse me, will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 15th, 2024. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $579,240.75 and payroll expenses of $20,990.23. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Dr. Lahr and a second from Mr. Hoffman to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Lahr?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Alright, we have nothing for new business and we are adjourned.